Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 23, 2016 legislative session. I would ask everyone in the room to please turn off their cellphones, and should there be an emergency, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. There's also a stairway to the left and then a right down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators, and if you need assistance, please let us know. At this time, I'd call on Pastor Bill Littleton of Washington United Methodist Church for the invocation. Pastor Littleton, welcome.
Greetings.
Greetings.
It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much for inviting me. Leadership requires two virtues that seems very simple: honesty and courage. All of you have earned that right to be here by winning the trust of the people of Salisbury. But along with that honor comes a duty of humility, integrity, and public service. So let's settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life, Lord, and opportunity to serve the people of this great city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders of your people. Help us see to humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak, poor, race, color, or creed, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
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 Pastor, thank you very much. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I do not see Ms. Bursler in the -- somebody's coming out there. No? Okay. So we will not have a community organization presentation this evening. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight on the consent agenda, we have the April 18, 2016 closed session minutes, April 25, 2016 council meeting minutes, May 2, 2016 work session minutes, May 9, 2016 council meeting minutes. Resolution number 2633 to combine the Recycling Advisory Committee and the Sustainability Advisory Committee Green Team into one advisory committee that retains the title of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Resolution number 2634 to establish a Youth Development Advisory Committee. Resolution number 2635 approving the appointment of James Bus to the Sustainability Advisory Committee Green Team for the term ending May 2019. Resolution number 2636 approving the initial appointment of individuals to the Youth Development Advisory Committee for the term ending May 2019 as follows: Bishop Jesse Abbott, Galena Bivens, Joanne Blackman, Tom Brown, Mandell Copeland, Alexis DeShiel, Zach Davis, Aaron Deal, Debbie Donaway, Mike Dunn, Harlan Eagle, Tom Evans, Kim Gillis, Amber Green, Terri Greenwood, Donna Hanlon, Dr. Ray Hoy, Michelle Hughes, Josh James, Erica Joseph, Kevin Lindsay, Matt Masserello, Jer Michael Mitchell, Kathleen Maumay, Walt Moore, Brian Murfree, Pamela Patey, Jennifer Shahan, Erin Sheahan, Robbie Sheahan, Lisa Simone, Jessica Sims, Jim Thomas, Mark Thompson, Major Vic Tidman, Ed Urban, Robert Williams. That concludes the consent agenda.
Any questions? If not, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Ms. Mitchell?
Second.
Mr. Boda?
Good evening, Ms. Miller. How are you?
Great, thank you. The first item on the award of bid for this evening is for Contract 119-16. That's the Beaver Dam Creek Title Dam and Spillway Reconstruction. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to solicit bids for Contract 119-16 Beaver Dam Creek Title Dam and Spillway Reconstruction. The scope of work for this bid solicitation will furnish all of the labor, materials, and equipment necessary for repair of the existing Beaver Dam Creek Title Dam and installation of a new permanent dam and spillway upstream of the existing dam. The procurement department followed standard bid practices by advertising in the Daily Times on the City of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of two vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of Tuesday, May 10, 2016 at 2:30 p.m. The first bid was from Rehacks Contracting in the amount of $586,900, and the second was from MerTech Incorporated in the amount of $782,417. Both bid responses were determined to be responsive and responsible, and Rehacks Contracting was the apparent low bidder. The Department of Public Works performed several reference checks and performed cost estimation analysis on select tasks to confirm bid pricing. There are sufficient funds to cover this purchase in the noted project account. The procurement department concurs with the recommendations submitted by the Department of Public Works and thereby requests council's approval to award this contract to Rehacks Contracting in the amount of $586,900.
I just have one question. This one, I guess, similar to the last, one of the last bids we did, and it's almost a $200,000 difference. What was the, what was the difference in the bids? Why, why is there such a difference?
Sure. So one of the items, it was item 102 on the bid, it was calling for a concrete spillway cap, and that, that was a total difference of about $145,000 right there. The second item is the change order for Contract A 07-14. It's actually change order number eight. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to process change order number eight in the amount of $109,274.98 for Contract A 07-14. That's the street improvements, curb, gutter, and sidewalk construction. Sidewalk construction is necessary for the following projects or areas. The first is to accompany work as part of the 2016 street program. The other two items are both near Salisbury University, the first on South Division Street and the second on Power Street. Funds are available in the accounts noted below with the expectation for reimbursement from Salisbury University for the work on Power Street. They estimate that work to be about $30,000 right now. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval for change order number eight, as noted above, to Malone &amp; Phillips Incorporated in the amount of $109,274.98.
So this says, this says the expectation of reimbursement. Have we gotten anything firm that they're going to reimburse us for it, or we're just hoping they're going to?
Let me look at this. Salisbury University will be reimbursing the City of Salisbury for the sidewalk to be constructed on Power Street.
That's from them, I guess?
That was communicated to the Department of Public Works.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call the motion, the award of bids. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2385.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, ordinance number 2385, this is sort of a continuation of the second reading from the last hearing. It's an, it's an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the period July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule A operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017 to fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule B capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule C appropriations for grant-funded expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memorandum in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be in the same as hereby set at .9432 dollars per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property, and at $2.21 cents per $100 of assessed valuation of all personal property, subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And two, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2016, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. Paragraph three, that all fees adopted by this ordinance and all other fees currently in effect shall remain so unless changed at a future date by the Salisbury City Council. And be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance was held at 6:05 p.m. on May 9, 2016 in Room 301 of the City County Government Office Building, 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. This ordinance was introduced and read at a special meeting of the council, the City of Salisbury held on April 25, 2016, and having been published as required by law in the meantime, is subject to final passage this evening.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2385, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. I will now entertain a motion for ordinance 2386 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Irtan?
This is ordinance number 2386. Again, follows a public hearing. This is a continuation, I guess, and a rereading of the ordinance 2386. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend the water and sewer rates to increase rates by 2% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2016, and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget, the City of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for purposes of the water and sewer departments now therefore be ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Salisbury, that the following water and sewer rates shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury. Would you like me to read these rates again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Water and sewer rate schedules. Schedule I, metered water charges in city rates, residential and small commercial. The minimum charge will be $19.89 per quarter. The commodity charge, $2.97 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge, $372.17 per quarter. Commodity charge, $1.72 per 1,000 gallons. Large, commercial, and industrial, customer charge, $575.17 per quarter. Commodity charge, $1.38 per 1,000 gallons. Under Schedule II, metered water charges outside city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, $39.78 per quarter. Commodity charge, $5.94 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge, $744.33 per quarter. Commodity charge, $3.46 per 1,000 gallons. Large, commercial industrial, customer charge, $1,150.35 per quarter. Commodity charge, $2.78 per 1,000 gallons. Under Schedule III, metered water charges, Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, $29.82 per quarter. Commodity charge, $4.46 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge, $558.26 per quarter. Commodity charge, $2.59 per 1,000 gallons. Large, commercial industrial, customer charge, $862.76 per quarter. Commodity charge, $2.08 per 1,000 gallons. Under Schedule IV, sewer charges in city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, $49.12 per quarter. Commodity charge, $7.36 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge, $927.95 per quarter. Commodity charge, $4.28 per 1,000 gallons. Large, commercial industrial, customer charge, $1,431.40 per quarter. Commodity charge, $3.43 cents per 1,000 gallons. Under Schedule V, sewer charges outside city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, $98.26 per quarter. Commodity charge, $14.74 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge, $1,855.88 per quarter. Commodity charge, $8.55 per 1,000 gallons. Large, commercial industrial, customer charge, $2,862.80 per quarter. $6.87 per 1,000 gallons commodity charge. Under Schedule VI, sewer charges, Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, $73.70 per quarter. Commodity charge, $11.06 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge, $1,391.91 per quarter. Commodity charge, $6.41 per 1,000 gallons. Large, commercial industrial, customer charge, $2,147.09 per quarter. Commodity charge, $5.16 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule VII, sewer charges, sewer only customers. Under quarterly in-city rate, 1 to 2 fixtures is $62.83. 3 to 5 fixtures, $94.25. 6 to 20 fixtures, $135.46. Quarterly outside city rate, 1 to 2 fixtures, $125.66. 3 to 5 fixtures, $188.50. 6 to 20 fixtures, $270.91. And under quarterly urban service district rate, 1 to 2 fixtures, $94.25. 3 to 5 fixtures, $141.37. And 6 to 20 fixtures is $203.18. Now, in those categories of the quarterly in-city rate, for every fixture of over 20, it'll be a charge of $55.86. And for every fixture over 20 for the quarterly outside city rate, it'll be $111.71. And for every fixture over 20 in the quarterly urban service district rate, it'll be $83.78. Under Schedule VIII, commercial and industrial activities, annual in-city rate for each fire service will be $373. Annual outside city rate will be $746. Annual in-city rate for standby operational service will be $373. And for outside annual city rates, $746. All right. Definitions, residential and small commercial customers. These customers have an average water utilization of less than 300,000 gallons in a quarter. Commercial customers, these customers have an average water utilization of 300,000 to 600,000 gallons per quarter. Large, commercial industrial, these customers have an average water utilization of over 600,000 gallons per quarter. Average water utilization per quarter, this will be based on annual consumption divided by four to get the average quarterly water utilization. calculation of bills for residential and small commercial customers, the minimum charge for both water and sewer will apply if water service is turned on at the water meter and usage is 0 to 6,000 gallons per quarter. Only the city can turn a meter on and off for usage of 7,000 gallons and above. The commodity charge will be applied for each 1,000 gallons used, and the minimum charge will not be applied. For commercial and large, commercial industrial customers, every quarterly bill will receive a customer charge for both water and sewer. Then for each 1,000 gallons used, the appropriate commodity charge will be applied. Be it further ordained and enacted, that this ordinance was introduced and read at a meeting of the city council, as previously indicated for the last one, I don't see it typed in here.
That's fine.
And 2016, and duly passed at a meeting of the council, presumably this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? If not, hearing none, I'll call the motion to approve ordinance number 2386 for the second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2387 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Mitchell?
Second.
Mr. Irtan?
Looks like me.
That wasn't you.
I think it was Boda.
Mr. Boda, we'll change it.
It sounded like you.
Sounded like you. Stop impersonating me.
Sorry. All right. This is the official second reading for ordinance number 2387, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding to transfer to capital projects fund to be used for the demolition and curbing required for Fire Station 2. Whereas the fire department has a need for $33,920 to complete demolition of old Fire Station 2, and whereas the fire department has a need for $20,000 to complete sidewalk work connected with Fire Station 2, and whereas the funds used for the above improvements must be from city funds and not from tax-exempt bond proceeds, and whereas there are no available city funds not from bond proceeds in the general capital projects fund available for the demolition and curbing improvements, and whereas there is not an appropriation of the general fund supporting the transfer of funds from the general fund to the general capital projects fund, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be and is hereby amended, as follows, with an increase in the current year available, 01000-469810, by $53,920, and an increase in the transfers general capital project fund, 91001599101, by an equivalent amount.
Hearing none, I'll call, call for the motion on ordinance number 2387 for the second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2388 for the first reading. Ms. Mitchell?
Second.
Ms. Jackson?
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 2.14 Administration and Personnel of the City Salisbury, excuse me, the Salisbury City Code to change the name of the Department of Neighborhood Services and code compliance to Housing and Community Development Department effective July 1, 2016. And whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury desire to create a Housing and Community Development Department combining the functions of the current Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance and Community Development under the newly-named Housing and Community Development Department, and whereas the mayor and council intend to amend the appropriate sections of the city code to reflect the name change, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, that Chapter 2.14 of the City of Salisbury Code be amended as follows. And if you, basically, it just follows Section 2.14, changing the name wherever it appears to the new name Housing and Community Development Department. The only change in the code of significant substance is where we talk about the functions, and that would be under 2.14.070, Assignment of Additional Duties. In addition to its duties, it's provided in Sections 2.14.030 and 2.14.040 of this chapter, Housing and Community Development Department shall oversee the applications for and administration of community development grants and perform any and all other duties which may be assigned to it by the mayor in writing or otherwise. And the Housing and Community Development Department shall have all power and authority necessary to carry out such additional assigned duties.
Questions or comments? Hearing none?
Is that the only spot in the code we have to change it, or are there other sections?
No. It, when, this was done just to get the name change through, but we've got a whole list of sections that we're going to have to clean up to correct the name change, yes. That's, that's in the works right now.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion to approve ordinance number 2388. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. Are there any public comments?
No, Mr. President.
I think it's appropriate, I would just like to commend the mayor and his team on the preparation and of goal-setting and the budget. It was concise, it was presented well, and, good job.
Well, I'm going to turn that right around if you don't mind. I just want to thank you and the council for everything that, all the hard work and hours that you put in. I know you had some long days there for the budget sessions, but we appreciate it and look forward to implementing this budget and, and ultimately achieving many of those goals that we set forth, and then communicating our progress. And I hope that's one of the things that we're able to, to do through this budget process, is utilize those goals to highlight our, our ability to deliver on the things that you expect us to. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments for the good of the order?
I just want to appreciate the mayor and, and department heads, a couple of them that I met with, both Mr. Cordy and Mr. Moulds, for their time and educational process and some stuff that I appreciate. Thank you.
I would like to also make, get a plug in here for our speaker that we are bringing in, Ms.
in, Mr. Tony Hoffman. He will speak to all of the high schools during next week. And on June 1, in the Wycomico Room at SU, he will be giving the community presentation. And I encourage everyone to hear this guy. He's quite the young man. Well, young man, he's not that young. He's been through a lot, and I think our students will get a lot out of it, and I think some of the adults in the community would also benefit from hearing it. So I encourage you all to come out on June 1 at 7:00 p.m.
And it's free.
And it's free. Okay. No other comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.